We want to find a place to sit and we're very happy to lead such a wonderful turnout for tonight's city council meeting. Every time I see Girl Scouts, I think of Girl Scout 40s and I have to control myself, so I have to do that tonight. We again, very, very much grateful to see folks around our meeting because they're a very important part of what we do along the way. And again, we need for everyone to somewhere along the line play a part in what we do. We need to hear from you, this is why we have Women's Welfare, but there are rules, folks, and it's very important that we all adhere to these rules. Number one, we know that when you get a chance to speak, when you come up and you have a comment to make, a new agreement, rule, we'd like to be able to allow folks to be able to share their feelings, their opinions with us, which is part of government. The other piece is that we want to keep the quorum here. In other words, if you don't like something which we've said, let's not take it, let's be respectful of one another. These are the kind of things that make government work, and this is why we insist on that. And again, the very last thing I'd like to remind everyone about is that we have Women's Welfare at the end of the meeting. And that means that during the meeting, you sign up for Women's Welfare. Once the city council meeting ends and we finish our votes, we will take a little more Women's Welfare. Now with that, and I'm a very special person, I'm going to ask the council to join me in being able to do the proclamation for tonight. And again, we're very happy to have our two city councilwomen be the presenters for tonight. We have first and foremost, we'd like to have this movie done, sorry, with the proclamation and all the women in this room, folks. Thank you.
So the first proclamation in Honor of Women's History Month is for Aliza Sequel. Many of you know Aliza Sequel, she works with Brandell, she's a country woman there. And she runs a number of things, is Vice President of the Ladies of the Bar, and is most well-known for organizing our meal train. Anytime somebody is sick, or has a baby, or is surgery, or moves to the neighborhood, or is giving Shippa, Aliza's responsible and organizes hot meals to their home every single day, every night. No matter what their allergy, no matter what their food preferences, she makes sure that it's a seamless process and that everybody's taken care of, and family knows they need to cover, while everybody's struggling. Next one is Rhonda Cole.
Congratulations, Ms. Cole.
Ms. Cole is the chaplain from the New York State Prison, the leader of the homeless ministry for the Christian Life Missionary Baptist Church. And this is in recognition of your tireless efforts and empowerment for the city of Long Beach.
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure of presenting this proclamation to Kathy Timor Campbell. And Kathy is an entrepreneur, she's an educator, she's a gospel artist, she's the owner of Kathy Corner of Care. Many of us are familiar with Kathy Corner of Care because once again, she has served tirelessly with respect to empowering all of her children within the Long Beach community, and so we salute you tonight. My second proclamation is to Professor Susan Cushman. And I am thrilled to give this award because Susan is a professor in favor of Jewish Studies Project at Nassau Community College. She also teaches women's studies, and this is again, she's been tirelessly actually lecturing here right at our Long Beach Library in her fight to really educate people with respect to women's issues, as well as to create awareness with respect to anti-Semitism. And so again, it's my privilege to present this award to Professor Susan Cushman. As we celebrate Women's History Month, this is a special time for all of us. And I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow is actually International Women's Day. I hope that you can take the time to wear red and to express the power of women. And so this week, that was my quote, that no one can really stop a woman that's destined to rise. And so as we have our young women here, 2296, we recognize that they are the future of our country and obviously of our city. And so tonight, it gives me great pleasure to celebrate Women's History Month with all of my council persons, as well as these wonderful women of the station. Thank you.
Again, this is probably the most fun part of our city council, our job as a city council people. We are very grateful to have as many people come to our city council meetings to see the importance that we put to our residents, the people, to events, to occasions like Women's Day and to be honoring half the population of this country, more than half the population of this country. And we are so well, well overdue. With that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Fraser.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach on Tuesday, March 7, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. Ms. local, Councilmember Diamond.
Here.
Councilmember Lindell.
Yeah.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Oramo.
Here.
President Torres.
Here.
First Governor Indicate, President, the City Manager Jackson Irvin, and Corporation Council Rob Eggestees. I'm now to salute to the flag.
Okay, I'm going to ask the Girl Scouts tonight to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know, for me, it's very hard to believe that this is already March, and that before you know it, we're going to be into April, and then our summer season will shortly begin after that. There are a lot of things going on in Long Beach, a lot of things that we need to let you know about that are going to happen during the summer, a lot of things that we're very saddened about too, that have happened here in Long Beach, especially in recent days. And with that, folks, I think that we're very grateful for the beautiful city that we have and for the kind of recovery that we've been able to do. We know that by very far, there is more work to be done. With that, I'm going to ask our city council, our city manager, to give us the update.
Okay, as everyone knows, March is Women's History Month, and the city of Long Beach is inviting everyone to join us as we celebrate the contributions of women through literature and song at a special event on Thursday, March 16, at 7:00 p.m. at the Long Beach Library. It's an open mic event where residents will have the opportunity to perform poetry, short fiction readings, acoustic music performances, and monologues from women authors across cultures around the subject of women's history. We hope to see you there. Artists in partnership in the Long Beach Public Library presents the Seventh Annual Folks' Punk Music Festival, March 17 through 19 at the library. For further information, visit www.aip arts.org or call 432-6342. The countdown is on, we're just 45 days away from the city's carry-on bag ordinance taking effect. Earth Day, April 22nd. Visit longbeachny.gov/bags for details. We also have copies of our carry-out bag, one picture in the front of the room for anyone who's interested. In conjunction with the Long Island Village Clerks and Treasure Association, the Office of City Clerk is participating in the Island Harvest Food Drive. City will continue accepting donations through March 8 in the City Clerk's office on the 3rd floor of City Hall. We also have an update from Department of Public Works, more projects are underway this week. City's order distribution crew will be installing two new fire hydrants as part of the ongoing fire hydrant program on the 200 block of West Bay Drive. This will improve fire detection and allow for better flushing to maintain water quality. Street maintenance crew will be repairing road patches on Illinois, Maryland, Ohio, Tennessee, 600 block of West Hudson. From previous utility work, the street surveying will be taking place on Main, Audreys, and Boulevards. In addition, beach maintenance will continue with renovations of the Maple Firehouse, material lighting at the Ice Arena, along with breaking and leveling the beach. Spring, and finally, the spring program registration is underway at the Long Beach Rec Center. Visit longbeachny.gov/rec for a complete list of recreation programs.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shim. We, you know, again, we welcome all of you to our city council meeting. I'm going to move right ahead into our meeting and... At this point right now, I think that we would like to do a special recognition to our Girl Scouts that are here tonight. And the Girl Scouts, I believe, have been present, right? And please go forward, I have the microphone there.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Bonnick. We are Long Beach Girl Scout Trip 2296. We have been Girl Scouts for six years and we are 16 dependents, all fifth members from different Long Beach elementary schools. We are here tonight to discuss bike safety. For our conference award, our trip created a bike club for six weeks starting in October. We rode with Allison Blanchett from the New York Coalition for Transportation Safety, as well as Mark from State Raps School Program. In our club, we learned the importance of wearing helmets, stopping at stop signs, and how to ride correctly on the street and boardwalk. We also learned how to put air in our tires, fix bike chains, and how to use hand signals and many other important safety rules. We rode on the boardwalk and streets in Long Beach, ending by riding from the boardwalk to another school. In a town that encourages bike riding by setting up social bike stands, we believe that you should provide more safe spaces for biking. We feel the signs that are posted on the boardwalk are not working because they are not easy to see or to understand. The signs seem to say that you could walk, bike, and run, and not really that there are specific spots for these activities. While riding on the boardwalk in October through December in our bike club, we came across many people walking and running in the bike lanes. We assumed these were mostly local people, and they still weren't using the right space on the boardwalk. This is why we feel that Long Beach needs to clearly make lanes on the boardwalk. We have close to 100 signature non-citizens that state the community feels the same way. I would also like to add that I go to McDonald Beach and last year, someone sprayed paint to graffiti on the boardwalk. And even though the powder washed it off, the paint is still slightly visible. During our bike rides, we also saw a truck on the boardwalk picking the bags of garbage. One of the girls riding almost ran into the truck because she didn't want to leave the bike lane and was scared and not sure what to do. We feel that the garbage could be picked up on wagons or hidden trucks so that large trucks are not on the boardwalk causing walkers, runners, and bikers to have to leave their safe lane. Also, it would be good if there were more monitoring to ensure that people are in the right space and following the rules on the boardwalk. We learned so much in our bike club. We believe the rec should offer a fall program. The club could do such things as meet on the boardwalk to ride, teach bike mechanics, and have a bike rodeo. There could be classes for kids of different age groups or riding levels, and even one for seniors. We would be happy to share our full list of ideas if you would like to contact us for planning. Long Beach is a town of life to bike. Bike safety is a concern for bike riders, but it also affects pedestrians as well. That is why we believe that if you have more safe and clearly marked places for cycling, then bike safety would be taken much more seriously. We hope you will strongly consider what we present to you. Thank you for letting us speak tonight.
Thank you, girls, and thank you scout leaders for being here with us tonight. Wonderful presentation, and you know, again, we see this as part of government, hearing what folks have to say. The issue of bike safety is perhaps not important to us as well. You know, the issues that we have, and they're very interesting issues with regard to our boardwalk because we did collectively select to purchase the epi wood that we have. The one thing that is a problem that we have with the epi wood is that it does not absorb paint, and the paint will wash away. One of the problems we have is how do you then designate the bike lanes so that people know, especially outer towners, that you don't walk in the bike lanes? This is something we're still grappling with, whether it's going to be signs, visual signs, whether we're going to put some kind of paint. We're not really sure. We are still trying to analyze what to do so that we have the kind of delineation where the bike lanes are that won't wash away, that will not just become garbage or floats out onto our beaches. And we're concerned about that, so it's something we're still looking into. But we appreciate everyone's concern and we appreciate everyone's comments. Thank you, ladies. Thank you so much for that. With that, we will begin our city council meeting. And we wanted to hold these young ladies to have their presentations before we begin because this is a school night, and we don't want to keep you here too late. So feel free to very quietly be able to leave if you can't, if you're not too before. You're welcome to stay with us for a little while, but we will begin our meeting.
President Torres, before you begin, I just wanted to once again acknowledge the wonderful information and contribution that True 2296 has presented this evening. I've had the opportunity to visit and to have conversations with them about becoming agents of change, and you've done just that tonight, and so our council is extremely proud of you because you've actually, you've figured out some things that many people get paid to do. So that means that you're creative, you're powerful, you're insightful tonight, but you were also thoughtful. You thought about not only yourselves, but you thought about seniors. You thought about improving the safety within our city. And so we celebrate all of you tonight, and the information that you shared, we were all taking notes up here, and we're going to have conversation. We're going to make sure that we do what's best for you because you are the future of this city. And so we're so glad that you would take the time to come out tonight and share this information with us.
Again, thank you, and again, looking forward to our city council meeting. Mr. Fraser, in our meeting.
Our first item this evening is a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into agreement for disaster management, response, and recovery consulting services.
This allows the city to retain additional consultants to continue to assist the city in its recovery for its super jump sandy, its recovery plan, and maximize reimbursement from FEMA funding for this case providing group FEMA.
Okay, and have we any comments from the council at all on the first item regarding FEMA reimbursements? Do we have any comments from the public on item number one, FEMA reimbursement, folks? It's more detailed in the following pages of the agenda.
President Torres.
Sure.
I'm sorry, just have a couple of questions.
Please.
First, with respect to retaining another consultant for this particular project. Just have a couple of questions with respect to the vending process. If anybody could speak to that process because we're all well aware the fact that effective January 1st, we do have our MWBE policy in place. And I just wanted to have a sense of where we are with that particular process, if that was a part of the decision for this particular item.
Okay, maybe our Commissioner of Public Works can address the question, and it's an excellent question. And welcome, Mr. Miranda. It's good to see you, Commissioner.
Thank you. This vendor was a consulting engineering firm, was part of the original RFP that we sent out, but we received six proposals, and that RFP did have very stringent WBE requirements in itself.
Just the reason for an additional, for any additional funding?
Yes, we actually have about 30 open FEMA projects, which 15 are going to require hazard mitigation plans in order for us to release funding from FEMA. FEMA has asked us why we're delayed on these projects, and our feeling was by assigning several consulting firms that met the qualifications, we could get to these projects quicker and get to that funding and get the projects completed. Once the hazard mitigation plans are done, these firms have been doing the design work for actually putting in place the hazard mitigation methods. And these include our water pollution control plant, our water treatment plant, our Public Works garage, our central garage on Long Beach Road, the MLK Center, the Senior Center, the rec center, and the Ice Arena, just to name a few of the projects that are involved. So we're trying to get these done in the next 18 months, so the more hours we have, the better. Any 20 firms had unique experiences in the different type of projects. One was more structural, one was more involved in water treatment, and one more involved in wastewater treatment. So we think it'll work out well.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. And are there any other questions, any clarifications that we need? Again, I ask the public, is there anyone who... Okay, let's start with this gentleman and then the young lady behind her. Ms. Hesch, call you right up. Welcome. I'll just need you to state your name, Nakia. Okay, if I remember correctly, there's 30 jobs left unfinished, or are there 15?
There are 30 open projects, but there are 15 that require some engineering design work and require hazard mitigation plans. There's different types of reimbursement reimbursements. Some of the projects that are ongoing are being done, didn't have staff, did not require any design services.
Okay, so what's the timeframe to finish these 15 projects?
About 18 months.
Okay, Ms. Hesch. Thank you, thank you so much, Ms. Radman. Welcome, it's good to see you.
Thank you, Aileen Hesch in 516 West Beach. Is FEMA paying for this new consultant firm?
Commissioner?
These funds are laid out by the city, and at the time that once FEMA approves a project, then the projects are reimbursed by FEMA for design and construction and then actual work.
That's an excellent question because it eventually will be paid. The way FEMA and federal government works is that it works on reimbursement, so you have to lay out the money first.
So I won't have to pay anything myself? Thank you very much. Also, is Mr. Lakerubis still involved in this?
Yes, on recovery projects, yes.
So do we see him here at all in Long Beach? Does he come in?
Yes.
Good, I'd like to see him one of these days. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hesch. Are there any other questions from the public regarding this item number one, FEMA reimbursement, folks? Okay, so I see no more questions, we're going to move on to our next item.
I have a duty to register to authorize the city manager to amend the current contract for engineering, design, construction, administration services. The rehabilitation of 600 block of Hudson Street between Grand and Double Oaks.
Okay, additional work is required in the engineering phase for the redeviation of 600 block Hudson Street. Funding is provided through the chaplain's letter.
Okay, I just have one question, and I'm not sure whether or not it's going to be our commissioners. I know we have both commissioners here tonight. But it's my understanding that this is a bulkhead issue that's being repaired, is that correct?
This is part of our complete road project, and one of the things on our road is a 54-inch drain that's going to need a tieback valve. In order to replace that drain, there's a deteriorating bulkhead that needs to be replaced at the same time. If the bulkhead was in good shape, we would have waited till the bulkhead project. But we need to do this part of the project in order to get the drain in.
Now, Commissioner, explain to me, apparently in the corner of Lindell, that little stretch of bulkhead on that corner as it dips to the left, am I correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
It's in very poor shape.
Yeah, there's a lot of erosion there.
Right, and this road project involves replacing the water mains, the sewer main, and the drainage, as well as street lighting.
Yeah, folks, we encourage people to take a look at that work and to look at what's being done. Are there any other comments from the council?
What's important to start?
As soon as the bulkhead design is done, the design for the water main, sewer main, the redoing of the road and lighting is already complete. So once we have the bulkhead design, then this will go out to business, will probably start in July. This was a project that was actually going to be put off till the following year, but we switched this to the project on Pacific because we want to wait till some other work is done on Pacific before we go into the road bulkhead. So that project will move back.
And how long does the bulkhead take?
This project will probably take about six months of construction.
The whole project?
The whole, the whole project, yes.
And Commissioner, do you work from the street or do you work from the water for this?
Probably work simultaneously. The bulkhead work will go on as we do the utility replacement.
I see.
And then the last thing that will happen is the road will be, you know, will be paved.
I see. Are there any other questions from the council on this item number two, on what's going to happen at the end of the Hudson Street and Lindell? Any comments from the public, folks? This is an opportunity to ask questions if you'd like to know a little bit more about this project, which we have to do. We cannot let Long Beach continue to erode, and these are part of our obligation as government.
and trailer for the city's fire department and sole responsible there.
Okay, this boat will be used for shallow water rescues by the fire department. Actually, many folks may not realize we have a water rescue team. And I see many of the members here seeing me. Thank you. Funding is provided through grant funds the city has received. Great, great. And of course, we, we have a place, Mr. Hammond, can you be able to keep this?
Yeah, I'm going to ask our fire commissioner.
Great, oh, welcome. Well, Mr. Hammond, good to see you. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. The city manager said this boat is being bought with grant funds from Nassau County. Would be known of course to the, to the city floor boat. We have made arrangements with South Nassau during the busy months that the boat will be in the water. We will keep it at their facility, at the emergency room until we can find an alternate place that I'll be looking into putting in something at the dock behind the Indiana Firehouse. But that project is probably ways off. So by the time the boat does come with a trailer or during the off months, it will be kept on a trailer. If needed, we can launch it from the boat ramp. But during the busy months of the summer, it will be behind the emergency department.
Great, great, great. And are there any questions?
Chief Kevin, if you could just describe what type of situations would be utilized this boat?
This will be used for any water rescues in Reynolds Channel. It is a shallow water boat that will allow us to work around the marsh areas. It has a very small draft. All our neighboring departments that have boats, their boats cannot get into the shallow water. So this will allow us to make rescues that right now we're doing with Archetski.
Currently, there isn't boat.
Currently, we do not have a boat. We had inflatable Zodiac that we used until Sandy. It was damaged beyond repair during Sandy. And we've only been using Archetski. The funds became available and this is a long awaited need for the fire department.
Yeah, that's, that's really good news to hear that. And are there any other comments or questions from the council on item number three? How about the public? This is on this grant we've received for both a shallow water boat with a trailer that will be used by the fire department for rescues during the summer. And of course, it will be taken out of the water during the winter months. And again, something that is very greatly needed, being people that live on a barrier. We, you know, sometimes we forget, we need to be able to rescue people in the water. And thank you so much, Commissioner, for being here and explaining that. Since I see no more hands going up on this item number three, we're going to move to item number four.
And four is a resolution authorizing filing an application of the county Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program entitled one of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended and title two of the National Federal Housing Act of nineteen ninety as amended for inclusion in the city's community development program for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen, forty-third year. This item is publication only, here will be held March twenty-first at seven p.m. Excuse me. I have five is a resolution authorizing publication of notice of public hearing of an application related to Wall Street parking departments for purpose ten thirteen West Beach Street for insurance agency. This item is publication only, here will be held March twenty-first at seven p.m. I have one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter through agreement for disaster management, response and recovery consulting service.
Move the option to the side.
On the right.
Yes, so I just want to again, I emphasize the hope that some of the subcontracts could be given to women and minorities because this is a non-additional opportunity in terms of service for them.
Yes.
Yes. I have two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the current contract for engineering, design, and construction administration services for the rehabilitation of six hundred block of West Hudson Street between Grand and Lando Boulders.
Hello.
All right, Catherine Diamond.
Yes.
Catherine Moore.
Yes.
Catherine Moore.
Yes.
Yes.
And three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a shallow water boat and trailer for the city's fire department and sole responsible there. And four is a resolution authorizing the filing an application of the county Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program entitled one of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended and title two of the National Federal Housing Act of nineteen ninety as amended for inclusion in the city's community development program of two thousand seventeen, eighteen, forty-third year. And four is a resolution authorizing the filing an application of the county Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program entitled one of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended and title two of the National Federal Housing Act of nineteen ninety as amended for inclusion in the city's community development program of two thousand seventeen, eighteen, forty-third year.
I will.
No.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And item five is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application related to Wall Street parking requirements for purpose ten thirteen West Beach Street for insurance agency.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. City management of personnel reports have been filed by the city clerk. We're going to launch the closing meeting. I'll bring that person.
I will. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that brings the city council meeting to an end. And we now enter the good welfare portion of our meeting. And again, we ask for folks to adhere to the three-minute limit that we have so that we can hear from everyone. And again, it's extremely important that we keep the kind of reform that people would expect at a, at a government function such as this. And again, with, with that, folks, we have Mr. Ted Fabrizio, that is our first person to come up. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Here, it's Nick Fabrizio. I'm here to speak about a near collapse of the structure at eight fifteen West Park. I'm sure you're all reading the report this week. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the policemen and department, all the emergency workers who did phenomenal job doing what they could to stabilize that piece of, whatever you want to call it right now, property is there. Right now, it's being completely braced up on my mom's house at eight thirteen West Park. So I'd like to ask everybody in your home, just to visualize this, stare at the front of your home. Now visualize your neighbor's home. Instead of being your neighbor's home, it's fourteen foot wide, ninety feet long, approximately thirty-six feet high. It's nothing but weak metal, no iron beams, and plywood. And it's leaning on your house. And it's being braced up by your house, which is causing damage to your house. Now visualize if any of you have a neighborly relative who is walking into that home and staying in that home, which they say is clearly safe to stay. And think about how you would feel about that. Having said that, I understand it's probably a ten-day window, whatever it is, you know, to see what has to be done with this home. And I respect that rule. However, this to me is much more of an emergency situation. There's nothing holding up that house, but my mom's house. And I find this absolutely absurd that nobody is over there and this house is not being taken down yet. And I'd really like to understand why.
Thank you, Mr. Fabrizio. We, we were glad that you're here. It's a concern of the council, a concern of everyone in that neighborhood. And it really has tremendous impact on all of us. I'm going to, I know that there are certain regulations that we have to adhere to. I'm going to ask if there's, we have the commissioner of police department, that maybe perhaps would like to comment on that because I know that there are regulations that we have to adhere to. Am I correct, Commissioner Hammond?
Yes, you are correct.
Please, maybe you can come and, you know, again, Mr. Fabrizio, we appreciate that you're here.
I can empathize with Mr. Fabrizio. That was my house or my mom's house. I feel the same way he does. You know, at the day of the incident, we were given a task of what we can do. We can either let it collapse and cause probably more damage or secure the house. Unfortunately, the only way to secure the house was to Mr. Fabrizio's house. With that being said, unfortunately, doing that took away what we call an emergency situation where there's imminent collapse. Once that being done, it now ensures that property owner of legal classification that we can't take immediate action. He has due process. And all we can do is circumvent the violations, which we did. We've been in contact with the engineer on the project. Unfortunately, the contractor and the engineer are blaming each other for the failure. As Mr. Fabrizio said, it's a long, narrow house, which did get a variance from the zoning board to be built that way. So we're stuck right now in a position of not being able to do anything until the ten days are up. But I did once again speak to the engineer. He will be on site tomorrow. We will have a person open in the building department there to discuss it with him. At the end of the day, I believe the house is going to come to that down to the foundation. But until those ten days are up, what the, our legal requirement, and once if they don't take any action, we have to summon them in the court, like I, as I told you, I will immediately seek injunction from our judges here to order the immediate removal of the house once those ten days are up. But unfortunately, the law requires us to wait for those ten days.
Now, how many days is left, Commissioner, on those ten, that ten-day period?
I believe four.
Four days?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
You know, we had, unfortunately, we had a weekend in between also that didn't help. But I'm hoping tomorrow we get some answers. We'll contact Mr. Fabrizio. And unfortunately, he was in our office today when I was having a heated discussion with an unrelated contractor that was putting in a new sense on this whole project. And, you know, unfortunately, he walked in at the same time. So there's any misunderstanding, a deal of context to that. But, you know, we all worked in towards it. I want the house down more than anybody else. I'm just frustrated. So we're hoping that by, hopefully by the end of the week, either the house will be down or we'll have an answer.
Mr. Fabrizio, we'll keep an eye on that situation. And if there is that imminent danger of it collapsing or hurting their house, you know, we will come back to, to the courts with that.
I appreciate that. One of the things, I would like to submit some pictures.
Sure, I appreciate that.
I believe it should be taken down. It's beyond, my mom wants to take it too. You know, again, what those pictures point out, even the foundation is uneven. I mean, I think we got to go back to complete square one here. Entire thing has to come down. Let's go back to designing and start, start all over again. And again, you know, I'll, I'll let my mom know she's pretty passionate, clearly. She's concerned?
No, really, we, we, it's, it's really one person that we allow. You know, Mr. Fabrizio.
She's on YouTube, she's next.
And I do have your, yes, ma'am. Ma'am, you are entitled to the public and speak.
Can you just blow the microphone for us?
Yes, yes.
I couldn't understand any words that I need to say with the system. I'm sorry. Do you have any, you put a bed and night off yourself with the bag packed with your pockets in your hand, you run out to talk to her, something might happen? That's what I've been doing since last Thursday. And I have one person to thank for my safety, my male girl, I'm on record. Deborah Fornio. She was delivering the mail. She gets it to my house to check if it's closed. She knocked on my door. She said, Marie, get out of here, that house is falling. She left, she went about her business. She called here. She called somebody to say what happened, that the house is leaning. When she finished her, she came back, she took care of me, she stayed with me till my son could get here. Then there were six policemen up on my door, which I appreciate very much. I couldn't even gather calls. I had to get my personal things with the policeman helping this down and his other hand helping my son to get out, which I appreciate more. But at this point, we're going to fix the bathroom, that house never came down. You're going to see what they did to my son. My husband's been turning over in his grave for the work we put sixty years in Long Beach. Sixty years in Long Beach, and they're worrying about someone in the house next door. They should have been put out on that water because it's all water underneath it. But they drove over to the front of the house, not where the back was. What is, I promise my kids I would be good, but I'm only saying the truth. I'm sorry, don't laugh at me, don't laugh at me. You agree with me. You, and if you live on the water, you, and if you care about the West End, no one does. I'm sorry.
That's all right, Mr. Fabrizio, thank you.
Eighty-eight years old, I always kept my mouth shut. But this is my home. They dug up my backyard with big, to hold up pieces of office that should have been taken down that same day. They, they, that is, they dug into my casual. I'm the only one back there that's got a new boat bulkhead and taking care of my property all the years, and nobody cares. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Fabrizio.
Commissioner, thank you. Is the builder responsible for repairing any damage that was created to the home to brace it?
Yes, the builder is responsible. I've already given Mr. Fabrizio all the insurance information. I've actually already been in contact with Mr. Fabrizio's insurance adjuster assigned by the insurance company. We've made all the contract information, the homeowner's information available to him, as well as, so we've been in contact with their insurance adjuster.
Because I did go by though of the home, and I think many people have. I did take a look, and there is a tremendous amount of braces, you know.
Without a doubt, but at the time, the fire phone was posed with letting it collapse and not knowing what damage, what damage you were caused, or temporarily bracing it up until the solution can be gotten.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Fabrizio for coming in tonight. You know, and I have to apologize, I don't look at the next person that's going to speak, and I didn't realize that your mom was really scheduled to speak. And you're absolutely welcome to come at any time to comment on anything at all in particular that are in your home. And thank you for being here. Our next person is Ms. Deena Fury. Welcome, Ms. Fury.
Hello.
Good to see you.
I'm here for two reasons. First, I'm here to be at Long Beach Acre Development. As you know, we are coming up, coming after our zoning board meeting on March thirtieth. With that said, we're holding a community meeting tomorrow night at seven o'clock in the Jibba Long Beach House School. And we wanted to make sure we came here personally invited to that meeting. We're hoping that you will come. And then we're also hoping in doing so that we are going to be able to continue to support the opposition, the new plan. So tomorrow at seven o'clock, available to see you there. As a citizen, I have a few things I'd like to bring, I'll bring up. The comprehensive plan, I know was originally going to be scheduled for this agenda for a hearing date because it's been postponed, I imagine. Comprehensive plan, yes. Do we know an ETA date on when it might be brought to the council to be scheduled for a hearing date?
Well, since you're speaking on it, during the last meeting, I was the person at that table that discussed because I wanted further conversation with other members of the community. I didn't feel that there were enough people who are aware of the plan and wanting to give input into the plan. I believe that a comprehensive plan should be, should have a vision that represents the community. It should be a community-based plan. And we've been working towards that with our Office of Economic Development. But I didn't feel confident at this time that we should move forward with that conversation until other conversations have taken place. During that last session that we had on Thursday evening, just two weeks ago, and you were present at that session, I discovered that one third of the people who were attending that meeting, they were attending a meeting for the first time. And I felt that that, at this time, we needed to have further conversations throughout the community. So that's where I stand this time I can't speak for, for the city as a whole. But that's where I stand in terms of representing the interest of the community.
Okay, Mr. Fabrizio, some people had asked a question, so I'll just ask them all. This question more directed to Jack, if possible. Back in November, I'll go back, we spoke about the emissions and the boards. We spoke about it again in January, we're coming up in March now. And I know I, myself, again, had come up with a conversation with other residents, with people that have applied for roles, that were spots on those emissions and boards that, you know, five months past the, the application process, which I maybe took too that, you know, five months past the application process, which I maybe took too long, but we are three, almost three months into the new year, and we haven't seen any activity on recreation or the...
I was waiting for an interview soon. By the way, I saw your application personally for Recreation Commission. Thank you for writing.
So we don't have any, we don't have a date, so when we're going to start actually moving into those...
I would look to be contacted in the very near future.
Okay, thank you. Now, on that note, towards the recreation, again, there's a number of us who people like pool, a four, five, six day a week discussion. I put, I did put a call into our Assistant Superintendent Alparante about the opportunity of possibly getting a digital time clock for the pool. And if the city would not go for it, that we have somebody who would be willing to donate one, as long as it's donated in a specific person's name. Now, I did find out the cost of the clock. I did find out what it would entail, and I can give you that information. We're talking about a nine, it's just got a $9 investment, and as far as from a city standpoint, it would require an outlet and two screws to put it in the wall. But maybe it is a way we can get that kind of done. As I said, there's a number of master's programs, a number of students that swim competitively, and then we look to have an hour, a little bit out of, in our analog pot, a little bit out of, out of the 21st century. We should be, we should be a little bit further along than we are.
The... Have you spoken to Alparante?
I just may have mentioned to him, I said, we had somebody who would be willing to donate, but I'm going to come to you first and say, does the city, can the city afford $900 to do this, including shipping? So before I have to have somebody do it. If you do have, if the person who wants...
City has to get prices.
Yes, no, I get it. This is the company, this is the company, and that is the most well-known, recognized, et cetera. We can find a variation, I'm sure, of it, but that's the, that's the authorized use by master's students and places that use them. My time is up? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Fury.
Thank you.
Very, very good suggestions you're making. And thank you for that, the, a sample of clock that we can purchase. Thank you for that. With our, with that, we have our next person, Mr. Michael Delurie. Mr. Delurie, welcome again.
Good to see you, good to see you, city council members. My name is Michael Delurie. I live at 6 June, Walk Long East, New York. I'm going to read something, talk about something, and then offer you something. "The comprehensive plan is a tool to aid in the prevention of overdevelopment." This is, was given out at the 15th meeting that has been undertaken. "Overdevelopment is defined as developing on land that negatively affects the current and future population by overcrowding, exceeding, overtaxing, available resources, and negatively impacting infrastructure." Problems with the zoning board. I bring this to your attention because members of the zoning board are not elected. They are appointed. The city council is elected, and you appoint members currently sit on the zoning board appeal. Some of the council members currently in office, it could be all of you, may not have appointed any members to the zoning board, but you collectively are responsible for the actions of the zoning board, since you effectively have appointed these members. In the case of 815 West Park Avenue, the zoning board's decision impacted a resident. All traffic flowed west to the train station, I am told, and school buses and children were over an hour delayed. For what? How did this happen? A little chronology that I am aware of is this. The house was purchased by New Up Rising. On October 21st, Paramount, who was running the auction for New Up Rising, had an open house and an inspection for this property. So Cardigan Ship and other professional groups encourage open space. The required frontage currently is 40 feet in this area. This lot, as you could see, has 20 frontage. This is known as old gym. Some people have a hardship. I don't see a hardship here. How can the zoning board allow a variance, which is 50% graded in a required code? I attended that zoning board meeting, and I waited in case it was called. Nobody appeared. I waited a little bit longer, and then I left. Not until there were contractors working there that I later found out the zoning board Now, with heavy winds last Thursday, shoddy or substandard construction, and the building was eventually going to collapse, I'll make a brief. I will not finish the rest of my statement. Part two for you is recommendation for members of a planning board, as requested in the draft comprehensive plan. I've had each one labeled to each individual member of the council. There are representatives from every area of the walks, the canals, east end, west end, west home, north park, central district. Remember, I think there should be a member of the fire department, the building department, department of public works, and so on. I think when you have a planning board that is brought up with citizens, residents, each one have a different perspective, but collectively, I think they all could make this city a better place to live in. Only my suggestion.
Delurie, thank you so much, because, you know, we, as a council, do agree with what you're saying. And again, you know, we, sometimes we have to look into what decisions are made, you know, the variances that are done. And you're absolutely right to bring it to our attention. But one of the things that I just want to remind everyone about is that the zoning board is the zoning board of appeals, and they would appeal a regulation, or we'd go to them for that. I spent many years on the zoning board myself.
I know you have.
And, and, you know, I had a very strong position against overdevelopment. And one of the things that happened was that the city was sued. And the problem with the city is sued is that the residents pay for that. And so we have to be very careful what we do and what we say. So we do appreciate what you're saying, and absolutely.
I just bring you the information too. I don't expect an answer. I just wanted you to be aware, if you weren't aware of that.
Yeah, it's the Delurie. Thank you. You're always welcome. And please come again, and we love these comments. Okay, and our next person is Ms. Mary Valasevich. Welcome, Ms. Valasevich. Good to see you.
Mary Valasevich, I'm here tonight as the president of the Northeast Bay National Civic Association. I am here about what happened last week on Pacific and Park. I've spoken to you before about that stock line going south on Pacific by the Beagle Club. That is a heavily traveled road sidewalk. And you have a sign there that says, "Right on red, but watch for pedestrians," something like that. I would like to see that sign come down and sew in my city. People are only looking to their left for the traffic. They're not looking at pedestrians crossing the street. I don't know if that was a reason it happened or not, but I have jumped out of my car when my boys were in school, in pajamas and a jacket, after a kid got hit on a bike, hit on a skateboard, hit, period, just because someone wants to make that turn without stopping. Unfortunately, it's our residents in our community, and I send posts out all the time, that are in such a hurry that sometimes they don't realize that a life is in danger. And what happened last week, as I said, I don't know if they were making the turn or not, I wasn't there. But all I can tell you is that sign contributes to whatever goes on on that corner. And I've seen it myself when I stop. And if you do stop and you have your blinker on, I don't know if I blink until the last minute, because there's some jerk behind you honking that you should turn. That only means, right on red, that you must stop first, look. You, as the driver, have the responsibility. And then make the turn safely. Unfortunately, we have people in this town that just don't get it. They don't get stop signs, and I'm talking about the canals, and I'm sure I'm covering a lot of ground here. They don't like stop signs. They roll through them. The Calipari roll, nobody's around, let me go. There are a lot of young children in our area. And one day, and I put this on our Facebook page, someone is going to have to live with the fact of hurting somebody badly. And I've seen it happen, and I'm really, really asking you to get that sign down before another person is hurt or a child is killed. Because I'll come back up here, and I'm going to point my fingers. This is not to be let go.
Thank you, Ms. Valasevich. And of course, I go with what Ms. Valasevich said, no one's looking for anybody to be hurt or injured, but I think it's important that we have the facts clear. This was a horrible tragedy. My understanding, though, is it did not involve that sign, it involved the driver going westbound. Not that, what you're concerned or shouldn't we look into as well, but what we want to make sure is the facts are out there. This was the driver going westbound. It did not involve a truck. Just a nice... I would be a representative for the police department.
Oh, that's great. Very good. Oh, and...
Directed to the...
So, sir, move up to the mic here. We're glad to be here, sir. Could you state your name so people know who you are?
Michael Popper. I was directed to represent the police department on this particular issue with regard to Ms. Valasevich's concern. The commissioner has plans to meet with Denise Ford regarding any changes to that intersection that are necessary. While we police that area, it's a road maintained by the county, so it will take several conversations to determine if that's possible.
Detective, thank you for being here.
How long do you expect this to take? Because we've had this conversation, the actual city has come up before and shared the same concerns. I'm just really concerned about timing, because this is really all about prevention. We're trying to save lives. It seems to me that our process here seems to be always about reacting to a situation instead of actually addressing the situation before it occurs. So can we really just, for the most part, can we expedite this situation? Because there are several signs that need to be looked at here in the city, and I'd like to see that happen as soon as possible. I'm very, very concerned about this. I'm still thinking about, you know, unfortunate tragedy, but I'm also thinking about, you know, after it happened, I'm jogging from work, saying, what about all the other signs? What about all the other situations? So I think this should become a priority for us as a council, for us as a city, to address this as soon as possible.
I would just add, actually, over the years, I know that many requests have been made to the county by the police department for assistance in many East Park Avenue safer for all pedestrian bicycle traffic. For example, correspondence with the county in 2015 revealed that the county had some plans for traffic safety initiatives in 2018. I know we worked with them at that time to synchronize the lights along Park Avenue. I understand the police commissioner has been constant contact with the county to effect traffic calming initiatives in line with the city's traffic safety initiatives, and we have asked that commissioner to continue to impress upon the county that something must be done. So...
So I'm sure the commissioner's looking into it. I think now we just really, as a council, need to go ahead and become informable about this, send some letters out, let's put some pressure on them to make this happen. This is about the safety of our residents.
And I think if I could just echo what Councilman Moore said, I think we need to encourage our residents to join with us in asking the county to, once and for all, address the issue in this corner. Obviously, we've done it in the past, but I think given what just happened, incident that happened in the past, we really have an opportunity here, and hopefully they'll respond to it.
I would just like to, Ms. Valasevich, that although we're talking about the county and their responsibility for the road, I believe that the no turn on red sign is our responsibility. So I'm sure the rest of the council will join me in asking commissioner Tackney to change that sign, as we have in many no turn on reds throughout the city in the last couple of years. So I thank you again for reminding us about that sign.
Yeah, I have to fully agree with Mr. Romo, because although, as Mr. Mandel was mentioning, that the accident took place on westbound traffic, I am very much against any turns on red of any kind. I have to tell you that I've had very close calls myself with people turning that are not looking, that I'm on the side there, or that I have my dog. If the dog doesn't melt, the car's going to turn into him. And, you know, of course, these are, these are areas that we are very concerned about. So we welcome, Ms. Valasevich, you bringing up the point about right on red. And again, we thank you, and thank everyone here for being here. And Detective, thank you for being here tonight.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we have Ms. Alison Blanchett. Welcome, Ms. Blanchett. Good to see you.
Hello, Alison Blanchett. Synchronized lights, you might say. Synchronized lights, when you retime the lights a couple of years ago. That was two years ago, I believe, this month, as the city council meeting, and I stood up and I said, this is not going to work. You prioritize vehicles moving down Park Avenue, not human beings. I believe it was, I don't have the paper in front of me, but something about vehicles can get down, you know, will be safer and quicker getting down Park Avenue. And I stood up there and I said, vehicles are now going to be able to get from Roosevelt to Grand quicker than a pedestrian can cross the street. That's not complete streets. That's a very incomplete street. That should have never happened. 30 miles per hour should have never happened. You should have, I know that was one of the laws, you could go without going up to Albany, but go up to Albany, get it down to 25. 30 is radioless for our main street that's going through neighborhoods down. You know, let's keep our, our main street, our main street, where it's pedestrian heavy. But those, that synchronized lights, that was terrible. You still can't cross the street. And I think it was Matt Adler about here a couple of months ago, and mentioned it, and mind you, you sympathize with him, that you could get across the street, and you agree now. Well, you voted for it. All of you voted, not you two, all of you voted for it. You voted unanimously that day when the commissioner and that RBA or RGA group came up and gave their presentation. And I brought up the fact that, that the timing was prioritizing vehicles and not... It's not going to prevent people from taking side streets. They're still taking side streets. People need to take whatever street they want. And someone even like went and I, or even said, oh, well, look into it. You just voted for it right there in the spot. That was wrong. Like, why bother having presentations you're going to vote on, like, right there? That's, that's like insulting to, like, public participation. But the light timing needs to be looked at again. That, that's, that's a priority, you know? The speed lines, that's another priority. Can we just, like, humanize our streets? Complete streets. Jack, I highly recommend you reread what that means, because you're not getting it. Since you changed these things around, and since you've been here, our crashes, there's been a serious uptick in them. We've had more pedestrian injuries in the city since you changed those lights. Is, is it related? I'm not entirely sure. It could be. But our streets are not safer. No right on red, that needs to be manned the entire one, Park Avenue. Comprehensive plan, would you have 20 of those meetings? The last one was the first meeting where transportation, like, transportation meeting, bicycles, pedestrians. Plus, it's like an actual, kind of talking about the grants. That was the first meeting that that was added on there. And there's no more meetings, and I was going to vote on it. So I had asked, and there was another resident that had asked the planning department, can we have a meeting specific to transportation and safety issues? And we were told them, I was told an email today, Tricia Bourne today told me to know there will be no more meetings. I would like to request a meeting specific to transportation, streets, safety, as far as this comprehensive plan goes. as this comprehensive plan goes, because so far, this is like twenty-some-odd meetings of developments. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Blanchett, thank you so much. And again, we appreciate what you're saying, and we will definitely take your comments and consider them, absolutely, okay? Because we do agree, and I just really have no more say, and we fully agree with, safety is our number one.
Miss President, a couple of things I'd like to add.
Yes, right. Okay, sure. Sure.
Correct. A few things. Number one, the city did lower the speed limits throughout the city. Number two, the city has increased the amount of traffic signs throughout the city. Number three, there was a synchronized lights project that actually, which took years of advocacy with Nassau County, because they control traffic lights throughout the county, was Park Avenue West, as they did not do it in Park Avenue East. Beyond that, you may recall from that time that that was the first phase of their project as the 2018 promised project that they have coming up that I mentioned earlier is allegedly going to create expansion, improvements, I should say, that will allow for faster ability for them to be retimed again after there is improvement in the crosswalks. Finally, what's related to that is the city's bike lanes project, which is a project, which, as we know, was discussed significantly, the first phase of which will create bike lanes, but the future phase of it is supposed to create traffic safety improvements, which will shrink exactly the problem we're getting at, we've all talked about for many years, which is that the width of the lanes on Park Avenue are so wide that you cannot cross the street in a reasonable amount of time in order to beat the countdown clock, so to speak, right? It takes you two light cycles to get across the entirety of Park Avenue, which I think we all agree is not a good situation, it's an unsafe situation when we will try to get through it in one. And so these are incredibly frustrating, I'd say, things that we all agree upon, and that are, but I guess my point is, don't think that these things are not being worked on, that they are very much so.
Does some work come behind closed doors?
These have all been discussed in public quite a few times.
Again, thank you, important issue, and critically, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you, City Manager. With that, we have Ms. Melissa Catalano. Welcome, Ms. Catalano.
Hi, I'm Melissa Catalano. I'm not going to belabor points that were already made, but I did act away tonight, promised friends and loved ones of Debbie Fades that I would convey their wishes, as well as the many, many Long Beach residents, and especially the parents who are all very close with Debbie. She raised her three sons here, and she was helping raise another generation of Long Beachers. She was not collecting cans with that stroller, she was on her way to babysit for her family. And only chance had that stroller empty that day. Ironically, Debbie didn't have a license if you were involved in trying to figure out who she was that day and where that. She didn't drive. She spent her whole life raising her children and buying groceries and doing her job in Long Beach without driving. And I live half a block down on Farrell Street, that intersection, and I can tell you, the crosswalk is practically non-existent. I mean, we don't even have paint on the streets. And I've, now that I'm aware, as most of us in the state, we thought that intersection was the responsibility of Long Beach. But the PTA, the Central Council, has actually formed a committee that is working this week with the superintendent to address just the safety of the street that our children have to go down to get to middle school and high school. And we don't work against you, we wanna work with you. So please, activate us. We are, one of our own was killed because of our negligence, and we will not let it happen again. And that is the second adult who was killed at that intersection within as many years. And these are people in broad daylight walking to work, and we can't let it happen anymore. So please, the public wants to be the voice and help you. Let us know what to do, because we cannot let this happen anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name. It takes me a while to get the pronunciations correctly. And again, thank you, point very, very well, and very important to us, what you said. Our next person is Connor Hertz. Just need you to state your name for the record.
I'm Connor Hertz. I'm a student at Long Beach Middle School. I'm also a biker and a worker. Where I live, K C Canadian, I lived in a western school. There's also only one sign for the middle school and high school. Crossing guard is placed at a spot where the buses are going into the school, and there are only a handful of kids walking at that area. My safety is as safe each day I ride my bike or walk to school. There are two routes to the middle school, the back on Grandway or at the front on Alabart. Both routes are very dangerous because of car keeping, pushing, speed, inattentive drivers, and people just plain not following the rules. I wear a gopro on my own in order to document my experience. Some names are better than others. Sorry. Last week, a woman was killed on Park Avenue right up the Shuimare List. We heard about the crash at school from kids who saw it happen or did pass it on bus. The intersection where this woman was killed is a place where dozens of kids are crossing at different times of the day. This is the intersection second, and the kids in that vicinity do not get a bus to school. Debbie's life mattered, my life mattered, and the lives of all the kids in Long Beach that walk or bike to school every day mattered. I hope that if you agree with all of that, you will address these safety concerns and implement protective by going and change the pattern of traffic in the city to make it safer for kids to get to school. To not be a privilege is a fundamental right.
Thank you, Connor. I have to say, it takes tremendous courage to come up to the mic and share your feelings about what you think should be the right thing. And again, just like everyone else here, we appreciate everyone coming up and sharing their feelings with us.
Excellent job, Connor.
Yes, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say excellent job, Connor. Thank you. Okay, our next person is Ms. Kathy Arce, I believe. Well, I commend you, Matt, and thank you for bringing Connor. Great.
That's Katie Arce. Good evening. I'm here tonight to address you all as a concerned mother and resident. I have a son who we just heard from in Long Beach Middle School, and because of our home address, he does not get a bus to school. We currently have one crossing guard posted at Alabart Street and the Old Boulevard for the middle school and high school. There are currently seven hundred and eighty-two students, that comes out to twenty percent of the enrolled students in the district, that do not get a bus to school. That means one of two things. There are either seven hundred and eighty-two pedestrians or bicyclists commuting each day, or there are seven hundred and eighty-two cars on the road in the neighborhoods to those schools. Logically, I believe that if we were able to ensure safe passage to our school buildings, we would be able to cut down on car traffic and encourage our students and parents to walk and bike to school. Statistics show that students that walk or bike to school are more likely to have better concentration and be higher achieving. There is not currently a safe way to commute to the middle school on foot or by bike for my son or his classmates at the middle school. Some parents choose to allow their kids to still go that way, and some children do so in the safest manner possible, while others do not. There are numerous parents that do not feel that their children are safe to walk or bike to school, and then they drive them themselves. This is a privilege in and of itself if you have the time and ability to drive, to drop off and pick up your student each day. Not only does it contribute to the congestion of our already crowded residential streets, it makes the atmosphere that much more dangerous for the kids on foot and bikes. Parking is permitted on both sides of the street in middle residential streets, and there is no protected bike lane. Where I do recognize that this is not completely the city's jurisdiction, part of it is. These are your residents attending this school district. They are commuting on your streets daily. You have an obligation to the children and parents of this community to ensure a safe passage to school for the students that do not get a bus. A plastic bag ordinance was recently passed and will be put into action next month. I wholeheartedly agree with this ordinance and have been using reusable grocery bags for years. I bike or walk when I can, I recycle, I'm conscious of my lifestyle and its effects on the environment. Have you asked yourselves what you can do as a city to incentivize this frame of mind? If the emphasis is always on drivability, parking, timing lights for cars to move quickly through our little city, then you will continue to be a car-centric community. We need to encourage people to park their cars and leave them whenever possible. The only way to do that is to install a protective bike lane that connects one end of this barrier island to the other completely. This will require a cooperative and cohesive working relationship with other municipalities. When I inquired with the Long Beach Police Department about what they could do to help me advocate with Nassau County for more crossing guards, more police presence on almost an illegal old bar during school arrival and dismissal times, I was given a brush-off. At the most recent comprehensive planning meeting at the library, I was the one that asked for a dedicated transportation-focused meeting with residents. The answer was that, at the time, was no. I am here tonight asking you once again, in light of the most recent fatality on Park Avenue, Pacific Boulevard, will you now make time to address this life-or-death situation? Will you take into consideration the pedestrians and bicyclists that reside in this community that want to be able to walk to work, to school, to the grocery store, and simply exist safely without having to be behind a wheel and inside a half-ton weapon? We are begging for a moment of your time to come together to address this dire situation. Thank you.
Our next person is Ms. Jackie Oden. Welcome, Ms. Oden. It's good to see you.
Good evening to the council and to the city manager. In September of 2015, there was a lot of concerns about National Night Out. This year, the Long Beach City and the Long Beach Police Department and the Concerned Citizens of Long Park will be hosting a National Night Out. It will be August the first, 2017, of being Kenny Blaser, and it'll be from four to nine. Why participate in National Night Out? To meet your local law enforcement agency, to engage and connect with your neighbors, continue to feel a safe and more caring community. Strengthen police community, partnership, build and connect within the community, share safety and awareness information with your neighbors. Become a part of a father and celebrate in the National Night Out. With this, I'm encouraging any civic organization to be a part of this planning, and any resident that's interested in being a part of this planning. I do have a sign that she'd see me, and we should have a very nice National Night Out. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person is Ms. Nora Edith, I believe. How are you, Ms. Edith?
Nora Edith. I just have a question about, and need some clarification, on the Army Corps of Engineers. I believe we're supposed to start in and around April first, once they're done in Point Dooka? Is that correct? They most?
Yeah, the projects will start in the future, but if you have comments in.
Okay, that's fine. So they have to start in Point Dooka April first, and then they're gonna move on here. And apparently, there was an emergency meeting yesterday that you attended, you and Mom, and people from Point Dooka were present. And we're not gonna start the project this summer? I've got all the photos to and to and to, and stay away from the tourist beaches during the summer. So my question is that if we are not allowing them to start this year, then won't we be fined by the contractor? And how much is the fine on cost to city? Is it gonna be daily, weekly, monthly? And then how does this affect the bids going out for Phase Two, that they can go out until Phase One is completed? And the finish date of 2017 will be delayed? So that's my comment.
Well, as you probably seen in the Herald, the city, in conjunction with Senator Kaminsky and Legislature Board, have been advocating for the Army Corps of Engineers to stick to their original schedule and not to unduly impact our residents during the summer season.
But no, I understand that in part, not unduly impact them, but was there an emergency meeting, and how do you say that you don't want the work to start on schedule?
I think, I would just say, the city is continuing to very aggressively press our case, and I'll be with that.
So there was no emergency meeting? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edith. Very important questions you have, and that we're all very concerned about, too. With that, I have Mr. Matt Adler. Welcome again, Mr. Adler.
Thank you. One of my questions haven't been answered, but I just want a little clarification, if possible. With the timing of the streetlights, so if I heard correctly, in 2018, we'd be able to cross Park Avenue in one night, if that I heard correctly?
Matt, I wouldn't guarantee that at all. I'd say that that's what the county has told us previously. I have, I cannot absolutely at all guarantee that they're gonna follow through with their project on time. What I can say is that the city's, second phase of the city's bike lane project, that we got a grant for on Park Avenue, along the more western part of Park Avenue, will assist in traffic safety initiatives to narrow the crosswalks so that we can all cross more safely and in time from that.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. I had to make sure about the name, and it's because of the way the letters look. It's Mr. David Garfinkel. Mr. Garfinkel, welcome. And again, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name as well.
Thank you, Councilor, for having me know all of that's going forward. I'm writing, apologies for that. David Garfinkel, five thirty-five, right? Yeah, no, apologies for that. A lot of my questions actually have been answered, and on top of that, I'm a little embarrassed. I'm here mostly about new development, and I was unaware of the two tragedies of which I just learned this evening, so I feel a little bit, I don't really want to involve new development now, and I respect for tragedies that occur. Councilor, you had mentioned something about the information meetings that were a bit of a turnkey, I was not aware of a lot of them. And so will there be more of these meetings, and when, and however, of those?
It's my understanding that there will be additional meetings to make sure that we maximize the amount of individuals who live in our city so that they can have the information that they need. That's my understanding, that we will continue with dialogue to make sure that we have as many residents as possible being a part of the plan in terms of their needs.
Thank you so much. And I was unable to, I just learned about the last time, I was able to attend, right through my best way through the PDF, which I found a little bit dense. Is it going to be possible to put a more plain language, sort of easier-to-understand version of the PDF, like highlights or something, or what have you? PDF, like highlights or something, or what have you? I know that's a lot of effort, and we take some, some, you know, you have to have someone do that, would that be possible?
The council met last week to just, once again, just look over, review the feedback from members of the community, and that was one of the items that was actually...
Sorry for...
No, it's fine. You answered the question.
Okay, all right, once again, thank you so much for your time, sorry for the censorship. And another thing, just, yeah, well, I feel bad about the refuto situation, so you just been, we can't about that, and, wow, and we'll get to about the recent, thank you so much.
I'd just like to add, so once this phase of the comprehensive plan gets passed and approved, the next phase is the zoning court phase, which probably will take over a year. I've been to a few of the, a bunch of the comprehensive plan meetings, and most of the concerns of the residents are really about zoning. So that next phase is when most of that will get tackled, specifically like the house property. They wouldn't have to see variances if, as a city, we determine what is acceptable and what's not acceptable already. So that's the next phase where most of that really gets brushed out.
No, actually, Matt, that's why I was a bit determined, because a little bit, I mean, once again, you know, I bought a house there specifically because it was a zone, and now the proposal, where you see the zoning by some, looks hardly outrageous amount, you know, 500, 600 percent, and then, okay, as you take from 600 down to 500, and we're actually grateful about that. And so there's no change to the density either. It's not the same density. Yeah, right, yeah, so, but I feel bad about the one about that given what I learned this evening, so I'm going to leave some, I'll talk about that then. Thanks so much for your time and the work of the censorship.
Thank you, Mr. Garfinkel. You certainly are welcome here, and then please come again, okay?
You bet.
Thank you for your comments. Our next person is Ms. Ali Heshen.
Yes.
Well, folks, we want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's been an excellent meeting, and again, we appreciate everyone's comments, the way that we see that you make successful government work this way. Thank you, and get home safely.